Good evening, White Marsh. I'd like to call our Township Board of Supervisors meeting for March 10th, 2022, to order. J.C.?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fran, do you have some announcements?
Yes, thanks, Laura. Roadwork scheduled for Butler Pike has been delayed until Monday, March 21st. Work will take place between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. daily. Montgomery County's Household Hazardous Waste Collection events will begin on April 30th. Nearby event locations include Addington Junior High School on May 21st. Join the members of the Spring Mill Fire Department on Friday, March 18th, for their Comedy Night fundraiser. Tickets are $50 each. And finally, save the date, April 23rd. Township returns to its normal springtime schedule. Join us at Victory Fields from noon until 5:00 p.m. for food, games, and events for the whole family. Thank you.
Awesome. That's exciting. Thank you. For the sake of just getting this out of the way, I'm going to jump to our approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from February 10th, 2022?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for the review of the conditional use 01-21 Federal Realty Investment Trust at 1842 Bethlehem Pike?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Kilkenny?
Sure. Thank you very much. Just to explain to the public, what we have here as far as a conditional use hearing is, it's akin to a zoning hearing, it's a quasi-judicial hearing, where the Board of Supervisors sits like a zoning hearing board. You'll have an ordinance, and Mr. Gottenplan can go over the standards, and Mr. Lewis for you to review. And what will happen is, you'll have the ability to take evidence this evening. If you want more testimony, you can continue the public, you can continue the conditional use hearing to a later meeting, or you can close the hearing and take evidence tonight. What I want to do is, I want to go ahead and mark a couple, I want to mark a couple of exhibits for the record. Sorry. I'm sorry. Is everything?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
Hold on. Okay. And what I'm going to...
Hold on a second. Sorry. All right. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm going to go through the exhibit list right here, and I'm going to mark all of these exhibits for the record. T1 will be a copy of the proof of publication in The Times Herald, which is our newspaper of general circulation from February 24th and March 3rd, 2022. T2 will be the application with redevelopment plans and associated documents submitted March 15th, 2021. T3 will be revised development plans, architectural plans, and associated documents submitted November 1st, 2021. T4 will be a notice, written notice of hearing to the applicant, an email dated February 18th, 2022. T5 will be the posting of notice dated March 2nd, 2022. T6 will be the fire marshal review dated November 3rd, 2021. T7 will be the zoning ordinance compliance review dated November 30th, 2021. T8 will be the White Marsh Township Planning Commission recommendation minutes of the meeting, January 11th, 2022, motion recommending approval of application. Just so people understand, there's a couple moving parts here this evening in case the Board of Supervisors want to move forward on this. You'll see under motions, right here, the consideration of CU 0121, the Federality Realty Investment Trust of 1842 Bethlehem Pike. If you want to move forward on this application tonight after this hearing, I would suggest that you adopt the motion first, and then a potential land development resolution, just so everybody understands the order. But what we're here for right now is the public hearing, so I would like to go ahead and ask if anybody is requesting party status for this conditional use hearing. What I mean by party status is, if you have an opportunity, you have an opportunity to cross-examine the witnesses that are called and essentially act as a party. That does not mean if you don't ask for party status, doesn't mean you can't comment at the end of this hearing. It just means that you can take more of an active participation in the hearing. Is anybody asking for party status? Okay, I don't see anyone asking for party status. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gottenplan. There will be a, he'll give a brief explanation, there'll be a presentation from the applicant, there'll be an opportunity for board questions, there'll be an opportunity for public comment, and then the board can decide what to do with the rest of the conditional use hearing. Gottenplan?
Thank you very much. This public hearing is for conditional use for the Flower Town Shopping Center at 1842 Bethlehem Pike, and the conditional use proposal or application is to allow a bank drive-through on a proposed bank to be added to the shopping center. And you'll hear about that more through the presentation and through later through the land development proposal for the same subject. But this hearing is to allow the drive-through. The drive-through is an allowed conditional use for banks and retail uses in the VC 3, the Village Commercial, Sub District 3 district. And that's in accordance with Section 116-290E5 of the Township Zoning Ordinance. This has been before the Township Planning Commission, as you heard in one of the exhibits on January 11th of this year, and the Township Planning Commission did recommend approval of the conditional use as proposed. At this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to the attorney for the project, Rob Lewis, and Rob will go through a presentation with any other witnesses that he may have. And I believe that he is going to be sharing his screen, and I will project that from my screen so that everybody can see it. Rob?
Thank you, Charlie. Good evening, everybody. Rob Lewis from Kaplan Stewart. I represent the applicant this evening, Federal Realty Investment Trust, the owner of the Flower Town Shopping Center. I do intend to call one witness this evening, that's Mr. Matthew Rutt, our civil engineer from Land Corps Engineering. I do have a representative of federal realty here, in case any questions come up that Matt or I can't answer, but I do not intend to call him on direct, as I believe most of the issues are engineering-related. Likewise, I have our traffic engineer, Mr. Frank Tavani, available. I do not intend to call Mr. Tavani on direct, but believe it's appropriate to have him in case any questions come up that fall within his jurisdiction. If I can share my screen, let me see if I can. Excellent. Thank you. If, as you've heard already, there are two applications before the board this evening, all having to do with Federal's proposal to construct a 2,450-square-foot pad site within the Flower Town Shopping Center. Before you, right now, is our application for conditional use approval, as Mr. Gottenplan pointed out, and that's to permit a drive-through in the VC 3 district. The second that we will address a short time later this evening is seeking preliminary final land development approval for the bank pad itself. There is a very long history to this project that would start really with Federal's overall redevelopment of the entire shopping center that began back in about 2008. I am not going to go that far back in this introduction. I will do my best to keep it brief, but if you permit me, I think a little recap of the last, what has happened the last two years and led up to this evening would be helpful to really set the table.
Rob, for whatever reason, your volume has gone down a little bit, just to let you know. We can still hear you, but kind of barely.
I will try and make sure to stay closer to my microphone then. As I say, I think the context is pretty important to understanding the project and what is represented on the plans. So if I can, on the screen now, and I have provided all these exhibits electronically to Mr. Gottenplan, I have them on my screen, and I'll walk you through them as I do my introduction. As I think the board's aware, shopping center itself is about 23 acres and split between Springfield and White Marsh Township. That delineation is pretty evident on this plan, with White Marsh being in the top-left corner, and the vast majority of the center being in Springfield Township. As of today, all the buildings you see out there on-site are in Springfield, and a total of about 177,000 square feet of retail and entertainment space anchored by the Giant Grocery Store, the Movie Tavern, and then there are two additional retail shopping strips, as well as a couple, already a couple outstanding pad sites. I've included this exhibit as A1. Throughout Federal's redevelopment and revitalization of the shopping center, there's always been kind of one portion of the shopping center that has remained untouched, and due in large part to really the complex nature of that little corner, which is that northwest corner of the shopping center that I'm now zooming in on. This is the, really the confluence of the municipal boundaries. It's adjacent to the creek and the floodplain, and just challenging from a design perspective because of some of the needs of the existing tenants, including the freestanding McDonald's. Having to be able to be serviced by tractor-trailers has always caused challenges with circulation. But the area we're talking about this evening, both in the conditional use and later tonight in the land development application, is entirely asphalt today. There is no green space there today, and the end result of our proposal will be to increase green space in that area. Obviously, that is accompanied by construction of an additional pad site. In late 2019, I think is when Federal decided to take on this last piece, the redevelopment project for the center, and that began with meetings with the respective staff from each Springfield and White Marsh. And at that time, we were actually talking about a 4,500-square-foot pad site that would include a restaurant, as well as a bank with an associated drive-through. We actually got pretty far along with that plan and that process, even obtaining zoning relief from both White Marsh and Springfield Township, really relating to parking ratios and where the parking is, but really relating to that fact. Unfortunately, then when we began the land development process, it was determined that the floodplain location had actually been revised for years and years, and it had always been assumed to be coterminous with the curving behind the drive aisle, but it had been relocated. And so we had to go back to the drawing board. We realized that that pointed, the only effective way to solve the problem was to stay out of the floodplain, and to do that, we had to reduce the size of the building. And really, again, it's important to note, it is floodplain, that drive aisle in the back is floodplain according to the maps. It is not floodplain in actuality in that it does not retain water, it does not flood, but it is mapped that way, so we knew we had to change our plans. So in the summer of last year, we actually submitted a new application with White Marsh Zoning Hearing Board, so that we could modify the relief that was previously granted. That was done, that was accomplished, and we were able to refile for land development with Springfield, and now filed our new conditional use application and land development applications here in White Marsh, which bring us here tonight. Those applications, as you already heard, I think, this evening, are proposing to construct only a 2,450-square-foot bank. The restaurant pad was simply eliminated. The plan also proposes some improvements that had, that revised plan also proposed some improvements that were really the result of the discussions we had had through the process so far with the planning commissions, both in White Marsh and Springfield, as well as a number of the consultants. Really, what we were able to do from the first submission to the second submission was increase the amount of green space we were proposing, most of that being that large striped area in the northwest corner. We've enlarged that to the greatest extent possible. You'll see it's notched out with some gore striping, that's to facilitate turning movements of those tractor-trailers I mentioned previously for McDonald's. So we couldn't make the entire area green, but we were able to substantially increase With that submission, we also modified some of our pedestrian improvements, specifically making sure we had pedestrian connection through that grass island from Bethlehem Pike, and then eventually connecting that pedestrian crossing in front of the bank all the way over to the existing pad at Mr. Pease. This, and I didn't mention that, I'm sorry, this plan that I have up on the screen now is marked as applicant's exhibit A2. As was mentioned by Mr. Gottenplan at the outset, we did present this plan to the Planning Commission in January of this year, and they did recommend approval of the land development, including our one waiver slash modification request, and they also recommended approval of the conditional use. One specific condition of that recommendation was to take the plan back to the Shade Tree Commission. There were some requests to revisit just the plant species and things that we were using in different areas. So that was done. We resubmitted our landscape plan to the Shade Tree Commission, and then by letter dated January 26th, which I marked as applicant's exhibit A3, the Township's arborist signed off on that landscape plan with the request that we substitute one variety of tree, and we obviously agreed to that substitution requested by the arborists. I have also, I know it's redundant to the township exhibits, but I have marked as applicant's exhibit A4, A5, and A6, the review letters that we obtained. Those are the engineer's review letter dated December 30th, 2021, Mr. Gottenplan's review of the conditional use application dated November 30th, 2021, as well as Mr. Gottenplan's review of the land development dated December 1st of 2021. Because of the relatively minor nature of the responses, we submitted only a response letter to those reviews. We did not fully revise the plans. I have marked that response letter, which is dated January 10th, 2022, as applicant's exhibit A7. During the, the board's probably heard, I'm sure, the feedback, but during the Planning Commission meeting, we actually had some pretty vigorous discussions regarding several items of the plan. In the end, I do believe that those were resolved, and that's reflected in their recommendation. However, subsequent thereto, we did have some additional meetings and some correspondence with the township staff and consultants, as well as Springfield Township staff and their consultants, to try and address some remaining comments and concerns. So if it's possible, I know it seems a little out of order, we're not talking about the entire plan yet, I just wanted to highlight a couple of those last items that were completed as a result of the Planning Commission in those subsequent meetings. We were really contacted initially to try and talk about more improvements for pedestrian circulation, pedestrian and vehicular circulation. I won't go through all the various iterations, but ultimately, we were able to have a virtual meeting with all of the various staff and consultants, both White Marsh and Springfield. And as a result of that meeting, we actually agreed to certain additional changes beyond what we had even talked about at the Planning Commission. And this, which is applicant's exhibit A8, this plan reflects those additional changes. I just wanted to note those. One of the concerns had to do with visibility of pedestrians along Bethlehem Pike with exiting traffic at that northern access point. There are certain physical impediments that made it impossible to overhaul that full access point, but it was noted that that area should be cleared of some vegetation. It would significantly increase the visibility of it from a driver to see pedestrians, and we are proposing that on this plan. We're also proposing to replenish and really reconfigure the stop bars, I'm sorry, the pedestrian crosswalks along Bethlehem Pike. Right now, it's just two striped lines. They're pretty hard to see, and they're set back a little ways. So they are going to be replaced with what I refer to as the piano-style pedestrian crosswalk, and that's at both of those crossings. We also agreed to some additional painting to notify drivers as they're approaching that a pedestrian crossing is upcoming. That will go down on the roadway as well. And then there was also a request to eliminate our current prohibition on traffic, standard vehicles circulating behind the pad site that is currently anchored by Mr. Pease. So we have agreed that we will remove the signs that prohibit through traffic and say trucks only, authorized vehicles only. We will install some signage that indicates that it is one-way, exiting traffic only. And we've also agreed to do some additional striping in that area to delineate delivery areas, trash receptacle areas, and keep that separate from that travel lane. The thought from staff and consultants was, it may be an avenue to alleviate some additional traffic when Movie Tavern lets out, for people to be able to circulate that way, as well as circulating along the main drive aisle. In addition to that, it is worth pointing out the discussion we had with Springfield Township for some additional pedestrian improvements in Springfield. And last evening, we were in Springfield, and Springfield Township granted preliminary final approval for all the improvements in Springfield. One of the improvements we agreed to was really to create an entirely new pedestrian connection to Bethlehem Pike at the main signalized access point, and that's depicted on this A8 as well. You'll note, it starts all the way out at Bethlehem Pike, provides a sidewalk coming down that main entrance drive, there's a slight modification to that entrance drive to accommodate it, and then provides pedestrian connection to the front of those existing retail pad sites. In connection with that, we're proposing some modifications to that drive aisle to try and help calm traffic and better organize traffic along that frontage. Those improvements include some bumpouts, some parallel parking so that people can get to drop-off spaces for, whether it's mailboxes, or to run into various stores that, you know, they'll only be in momentarily. So all of those types of improvements to provide that pedestrian connection are proposed in Springfield and are depicted on this applicant's exhibit A8. These plans actually were circulated, I think commented upon at least once or twice, and A8 does reflect, I think, the final agreed-upon revisions to all those pavement markings, pedestrian improvements, and so forth. Subsequent even to that, to A8 being circulated and I think generally agreed upon, we did receive an additional comment regarding the design at the rear of our drive-through. Our plans as submitted, because of ordinance requirements, proposed a solid fence to screen the drive-through. It's accompanied by landscaping, but the request or comment that had come in was to modify that to being a non-opaque fence and some additional landscaping. The thought was that with an opaque fence, there could be a security concern, or even just people being fearful of being back there, having a fence that somebody could hide behind in the middle of the night. We're certainly fine with making that revision to the plan and would accept that as a condition to the extent necessary if the board is inclined to grant our conditional use. Since the Planning Commission, I think we have also resolved the calculation of the applicable traffic impact fee. It's, I think, worthy of note that the calculation results, I believe, in five or six p.m. peak hour trips for the entire bank. And that's a function of ITE, because the calculations really take into effect that this is a very large shopping center, and you're unlikely to generate a whole lot of new trips for a bank. They will typically be people that are already heading to the shopping center for some other purpose and will be stopping by the bank. So a bank is not a high-trip generator to start with, but located in a shopping center is really anticipated to generate very little additional new traffic. I believe we also addressed the calculation of the applicable fee-in lieu of dedication of park and rec land. I think the only other exhibits I have that I haven't identified for the board, for the record, we have A9, which is actually our traffic engineer, Mr. Tavani. His February 10th, 2021, letter addressing the actual drive-through and the queuing, and indicating that we have sufficient stacking length for that queue. And then applicant's exhibit A10, which are architectural renderings of the proposed bank and drive-through. So with all of that, my final comments, I guess, just a reminder that the conditional use that's before the board this evening is only with respect to the drive-through. The bank itself is a byright permitted use, but your ordinance does require conditional use to add the drive-through. It's important also to note that this is not a drive-through teller window. This is a drive-up ATM. The facility actually has two other ATMs that are available at all times as well within the lobby, so this is really an additional convenience as an ATM. And as Mr. Tavani's study points out, a drive-up ATM is likely to have far less queuing and far less impact even than a standard drive-through. With that, I introduce Matt Rutt, unless you have any questions for me, introduce Matt Rutt, provide some brief testimony for the conditional use.
Why don't you swear in the witness?
Mr. Rutt? Could you just raise your hand? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear the testimony will give this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Matt, with whom are you currently employed?
Currently, the president of Land Corps Engineering Consultants.
And are you a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yes, I am.
Approximately, how many years have you been a licensed engineer?
I believe it's over 20 now, I believe 22 years.
And you're familiar with the property that's the subject of this proceeding?
Very. I live in the community, and I get my pizza, my movies, and my groceries on this property, so very familiar with it.
And am I also correct that you have previously testified before municipal bodies for hearings such as conditional uses?
Many times, yes.
And in those proceedings, you were offered and accepted as an expert in civil engineering?
Yes.
Mr. Kilkenny, I would like to offer Mr. Rutt as an expert in civil engineering.
Well, let me see if Chair Boyle Nester or any of the supervisors would like to query this witness any further.
I'm comfortable.
No? Then this, your witness is accepted as an expert.
Excellent. Thanks. So Matt, I just gave a longer-than-a- So Matt, I just gave a longer-than-expected overview of kind of the procedural history of the project. I'd like just you to add some general description of the project itself, if you can. I've put up on the screen applicant's Exhibit A2. So if you could, just review for the board really what's being proposed. I know it's really more for the land development, but it'll put the issues on record and really give us context for why we are here for conditional use.
Sure, thanks, Rob. As usual, Rob has stolen my thunder, so I'll keep it brief. But yeah, I mean, as Rob previously noted, this is really, you know, putting it more or less a pad development in a portion of the existing shopping center that's undeveloped. It's largely a sea of asphalt, for everybody that's familiar with it, is very aware of that. As Rob also noted, we've previously been to the zoning hearing board for issues with parking, et cetera, which have all been granted. And what we're proposing is to put in a proposed bank of 2,450 square feet. Again, as noted, it will have a drive-up ATM. It is not a drive-up teller. It's simply an ATM with adequate stacking. Furthermore, we've provided an escape lane. So if for some reason you do sit in the queue and it's either taking longer or you choose to not continue with the ATM, you can get out of that area. Part of this has relocated some of the parking stalls, primarily the handicap stalls, that used to be in this area that serviced Mr. Pease. We've serviced those, we've moved those across the drive aisle. If you're familiar with that frontage aisle in front of that strip, there is currently multiple pedestrian ADA crossings to that strip. There's a speed table directly to the right, if you're looking at the plan, right on the far side of Mr. Pease. We're providing ADA access, the proper ADA ramps from those relocated ADA stalls to the strip and to Mr. Pease, and they'll also serve as ADA access to the proposed bank. As Rob noted, we're also really making a lot of improvements in addition to the bank, just to the general circulation of the property. Pedestrian circulation, vehicular circulation, making it safer, making it more intuitive. You know, I know we're talking to White Marsh now, but I think the Springfield Township side of the improvements with the channelization of the front drive aisle over by the post office, that's going to make a big difference with a little bit of the Wild West out there right now when you drive in. And the other big thing here is, you know, just from a green space perspective, we're turning that sea of asphalt, but yes, we're doing a development, but in the process of that development, we're bringing approximately 7,000 square feet of additional green space to this corner of the property, which is significant. And it's not just green space. It's planted with, we're proposing nine shade trees, three ornamental trees, 68 shrubs around the building, and plus a whole host of perennials to make things look nice seasonally. So overall, I mean, this is a, I see this as a definite overall plus to the center and brings it, you know, right now, it's, I personally think it's an eyesore part of the center, and this cleans it up and sort of finishes off the center of this area and makes it look how it should look.
Thanks, Matt. And Matt, just, am I correct that applicant's Exhibit A2, which is here, is a plan that has been reviewed several times by the township's consultants?
Yes.
And am I also, was I also correct in my introduction when I described applicant's Exhibit A8 as showing some additional improvements that have been agreed to by federal realty subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting and subsequent to those review letters?
That's correct. And in my opinion, those changes have only gone above and beyond to enhance the benefits of the project.
Okay. I'm going to come back to A2. Matt, just, we do need to go through a few specific items because we have conditional use here. Am I correct that the portion of the property that's the subject of this project is within White Marsh Township and within the VC3 zoning district?
That's correct.
And in accordance with Section 116, 290D of the zoning ordinance, a bank is a specifically permitted use in the VC3 district?
Yes.
But that in accordance with 290E5, a drive-through facility for a bank is what requires a conditional use, correct?
That's correct.
So E5, the subchapter E5, has five criteria for that conditional use. So let's go through those quickly for the board. The first, that a transportation study is submitted in accordance with the applicable standards of Section 105-21B9 of the subdivision and land development ordinance. In your opinion, has the applicant satisfied this requirement?
Yes, it has. This matter was discussed at length at the Planning Commission. The section in note from the SALDO references requirements for the traffic study. This project is really minimal from a traffic generation perspective in relation to the whole center, which is, as you noted, 170,000 square feet. So this is very minor. So the full-blown traffic study is not required for this project. It was reviewed by the applicant's traffic engineer, who's provided the queuing analysis and other analysis for the proposed bank. The site plan, as we see it on this exhibit, is adequate, and the traffic engineer, township's engineer, has also agreed to that.
And Matt, in fact, as I think you already stated, we're actually, in your opinion, improving circulation from a pedestrian and vehicular standpoint, correct?
Absolutely.
The next criteria is that the drive-through window shall not require any additional access drives to existing roads. Do we satisfy that criteria?
We do. No new access drives on the Bethlehem Pike are proposed.
The next criteria is that the drive-through window shall be located behind the building or otherwise shielded from view from an abutting street. On a corner lot, the drive-through window shall be shielded from view at a minimum from the abutting street on which the primary building facade is located. In your opinion, does our proposal satisfy this requirement?
It does. This is more or less, can be interpreted as a corner lot where the drive aisle in front of the bank is really a street. The Bethlehem Pike is obviously another frontage. So there's a clear front and back to this, to this bank, which is consistent with the strip next to it. The drive-up teller, the drive-through, drive-up ATM, rather, is opposite of that front facade, and it's also screened appropriately, obviously by the building from that front drive aisle and also from the proposed landscape and green areas from Bethlehem Pike.
The next criteria is that traffic and vehicular stacking area for the drive-through window shall not conflict with internal circulation or block access to any parking spaces with stacking for an appropriate number of vehicles. Do we satisfy that criteria as well?
We do, and this is based on an analysis by Mr. Tavani in his submitted report, that we do have provision, sufficient stacking, particularly in light of the fact that the drive-through is only for an ATM. And there's also two other ATMs, as you noted, are available inside the bank.
Matt, the next criteria states that when a drive-through is located adjacent to a residential use or district, a decorative fence shall be installed with landscaping provided on the outside of the fence. As I think you're aware, to the north, we do have, across the creek and to the north, we do have a residential district. Do we satisfy this criteria?
We do. We propose a fence directly on the opposite side of the drive-through aisle, and we propose the proper landscaping beyond that fence. As you noted, that there was a change in the type of fence, mainly for security purposes, but even then, we still satisfy that requirement.
Excellent. Matt, the next one states that the drive-through shall not constitute the sole access for use. You must have at least one pedestrian entrance. Does the proposed facility satisfy that requirement?
Yes, it does.
There is one more criteria in the drive-through conditional use criteria, but that applies only to restaurants. So we will skip that one for now. So Matt, in addition to those specific criteria in 290E, there's some general criteria applicable to all conditional uses in Section 11637F, and those are identified as numbered 1 through 8. Have you familiarized yourself with those general criteria?
I have.
And in your opinion, does the proposed drive-through satisfy those general criteria?
Yes, it does.
Matt, in addition to all that, VC3 district has some general requirements for building design, and those are set forth in Section 116290, I'm sorry, 291B. Do you believe that those criteria have been satisfied by this project?
Yes.
And am I correct that those are, satisfaction of those criteria is depicted on the architectural renderings has been marked as applicant's Exhibit A10?
Correct, yes.
And Matt, at the Planning Commission, we did note that A10 has a couple of very minor inconsistencies because it was prepared before the revisions to the plan. Am I correct in pointing out that the location of the door on the Bethlehem Pike side, in accordance with your plan, has been shifted more towards the corner, whereas in this elevation, it is more towards the rear?
That's correct. And also, the prior view that you showed does not depict the escape lane.
Excellent. But otherwise, applicant's Exhibit A10 is consistent with the proposal?
Yes.
Matt, lastly, Section 116292 provides conditions of approval for all conditional uses. To the extent that these apply, to some of them simply don't, to this proposal, does the project comply with these requirements?
In my opinion, yes.
And Matt, we have certain outstanding review letters that I've marked as exhibits tonight from the township's engineer. Am I correct that those remaining comments are all will comply or have been addressed already by some of the supplemental improvements that we previously discussed?
That's correct, as witnessed by the response letter that we authored, that you had already marked as an exhibit. Yes.
Matt, lastly, just in your professional opinion, will the proposed drive-through ATM have any detrimental impact on the public health, safety, or welfare?
No, it won't.
That's all I have for Mr. Rutt.
Chair Boyle-Nester, let's see if the Board of Supervisors has any questions of this witness.
Do you have any questions?
I have one question. You mentioned the existing pedestrian crosswalks at the existing pad, as well as the traffic table, I think you called it. Will those remain as they exist today?
You mean in front of the strip, further up?
In front of the Mr. Pease area.
Yes. What you see on, yeah, the dark, the dark crosswalks that we show here are proposed to the right, if you're looking at this, in front of the existing multi-tenant building, where there's a speed table, right where Rob's indicating, and there's also some other crosswalks there. They will remain, yes?
Thank you.
Mr. Manuel, it's worth noting, I think, for the record, the resolution of approval from Springfield Township requested and federal agreed to have an onsite meeting with Springfield Township's engineer to identify any parking spaces and other pedestrian crosswalks and things that need refreshing in terms of paint has faded and things like that. And so that is a specific condition that Springfield has attached as well, to make sure that those are all addressed from a maintenance standpoint.
That's great, because they could use it.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, Matt. I think you mentioned about the bank having access for an ATM inside, is that right? So if someone didn't want to use, if, you know, there was a long line, they didn't want to go through the drive-through, they could go inside the bank?
Correct.
Now, is that only accessible if the bank is open? Like, there's not a vestibule area or another way to go in when the bank is otherwise closed?
I can answer that too, if you'd like. I believe it is a vestibule, but it is 24/7 accessible into, and I believe they're proposing to have two ATMs actually in that vestibule.
Okay, just so, if it was backed up in the drive-through, there are other ways 24/7 for people to still access the ATM?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I don't think we do.
Mr. Lewis, do you have any more witnesses?
I do not. If the board does not have any additional questions, I would simply ask that the board admit into the record applicant's exhibits A1 through A10. That would take care of our case in chief. Obviously, if I need to recall anybody to respond to any comments, we will.
Okay, those are admitted. Want to see if there's any public comment?
Yeah, do we have any public comment? Yes, please come on up.
Good evening. My name is Richard Abraham, 670 Bethlehem Pike in White Marsh Township.
Please don't move, please don't move that.
Okay. Is there any place I can put papers down or not? I guess not. I had submitted a letter to the Board of Supervisors with copies to Mr. Guttenplan and Ms. Heinrich, and so I want to incorporate all those comments. But, you know, the Planning Commission specifically said that their approval was conditioned on the Board of Supervisors being satisfied with the traffic study that has been submitted. There are many, many reasons that I believe you should not be satisfied with that traffic study. First of all, they, you know, Mr. Lewis and the, and Travani and Associates are doing some real sleight of hand in their description of what they have here. First of all, to comply with the ordinance 116295E5C, which they construe this as a corner lot by restating that the driveway is now a street, when clearly what this ordinance refers to is where the drive-through window needs to be located compared to Bethlehem Pike. First of all, I don't know how they can consider this to be a corner lot where the bank is. It's just, they're making that up in order to fit within the definitions in the ordinance. The ordinance specifically says that the drive-through window shall be located behind the building or otherwise shielded from view from an abutting street. There's only one abutting street to this entire property, and that is Bethlehem Pike. So therefore, the drive-through window, which is not shielded from, which is not behind the bank building, needs to be otherwise shielded from view to meet the requirements of the ordinance. If they are going to do that, if I may approach, what's going to happen is if they put landscaping in this area over here to shield the drive-through window from view, then any traffic exiting this way is going to be blocked from viewing what's going on with traffic coming in, and people coming out of the drive-through window are also likewise not going to be able to see traffic coming into this, into the shopping center. That, I believe, is going to create a potential significantly hazardous condition. Ms. Heinrich, in her, well, first, under 116295A, for drive-through windows, there must be a, can only be approved if there is a transportation impact study submitted in accordance with the standards of that section in SALDO. The traffic study that has been submitted has data from 2012. They have not updated it. They have not taken into consideration the traffic being created by the new Movie Tavern. And most importantly, on the first page of the traffic study, they say that the drive-through must have room for 5.8 cars. If you look at their plan, they do not have enough room for 5.8 cars. So that means by their own traffic study, that they are indicating that cars are going to be sticking out to be sticking out into the primary exit lane for traffic from the movie tavern, the supermarket, and every other part of the shopping center. So their own study shows that this is not a proper, large enough stacking lane to avoid interference with the traffic. Ms. Heinrich, in her letter, which was dated December 30th, had several very, very significant comments about what needed to be added to the traffic study. On page 2 of her letter, she said it needs to contain full documentation of the proposed internal and existing external transportation system, shall include proposed internal vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian circulation. This traffic study does not have that. It must have all proposed ingress and egress locations and internal roadway widths and rights of way, parking conditions, traffic channelizations, and any traffic signals or other intersection control devices within the site. So there is nothing in the study that was submitted that complies with what she has requested. She also said, during a site visit, it was observed the secondary, unsignaled site access on this site is heavily used. Additional study of this secondary access could be performed to evaluate impact of the realignment on overall vehicular flow. Now, the only thing that the response by the applicant says is, we don't have to do that. So they totally ignore Ms. Heinrich's comments and say they don't have to comply with that because it's only a minor development, not a huge change as required under SALDO. However, the SALDO ordinance specifically says that the Planning Commission may, and this is 105, 21B, 9C2, the Planning Commission, at its discretion, may request the preparation of a traffic impact study for any subdivision or land development. They have requested that you be satisfied with the study submitted, and the study submitted doesn't even comply with what Ms. Heinrich has requested it include. Again, the applicant merely gives Ms. Heinrich's letter the back of their hand, saying, oh, we don't have to do that. The Planning Commission has requested, please, that you do request that they have a traffic impact study. They also assume that the effect of COVID on the use of a drive-through ATM machine is going to be minimal and less than would have existed before. There's no basis for that, and if that's accurate, why don't they submit a study that has data that supports their conclusion? They have not in any way provided that information. Finally, and this may be one of the most important aspects of my comments, this bank is not something that is needed by the citizens of White Marsh Township. There are currently two banks within the shopping center. There are currently two banks just across Bethlehem Pike from the shopping center. This would be the fifth bank within about 300 feet of each other in this shopping center. In addition, there are, I think, three or four other banks in Flower Town, in the Springfield Township portion of Flower Town, but within the community there. This is not something that the citizens of White Marsh Township need. If it's not something that is needed for the citizens, why allow invasion of the Rapparian Corridor Overlay District? This is a side yard requirement that is for the protection of the public and the protection of the citizens, and you are just allowing them to invade that side yard requirement. Now, I'm not smart enough or knowledgeable enough to know why there's such an importance to the Rapparian Corridor Overlay District, but it's there for a reason, and to allow this development, you just have to totally ignore that requirement and risk whatever that would mean is risked to the citizens of this community. And I don't think that there's, if this was something, if there were no banks within eight miles of this, and this was an important improvement for our community, fine, no problem, we'll see, we'll hope it comes out well. But this is not something that is needed or required or even requested by anyone except the developer, the owner. So I think that you should look strictly at a transportation study that takes into account the traffic from the movie tavern. This going right past the bank is the major exit for the entire shopping center. They can't go out. They go out this way to the traffic light, as well as to go north. Now, they've added some ability to drive behind where Mr. Pease is, but I don't know to, why don't we have a traffic study that indicates how much that will alleviate any traffic on the main road? And I really think that there is no basis and no reason that this bank should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Boyle-Nester, I believe Ms. Zove also wants to come in.
Yes, I did see that. Thank you. Sedell?
Good evening. Sedell Zove, Hartsbridge Road. I am encouraged and pleased by the improvements that have been made or the enhancements made to this plan over time. In particular, the sidewalk from Bethlehem Pike, that is a critical improvement, and all the greening that's been done where there is current asphalt. However, I do recall when this project was reviewed by the Shade Tree Commission, there was a request that the planting focused more heavily on native species, trees, shrubs, and perennials. If I'm not mistaken, I heard Mr. Lewis say early on that the revised planting plan had been reviewed by the arborist, but had to go back to the Shade Tree Commission, or did the Shade Tree Commission authorize the arborist to act in its stead?
Sedell, yes. We've entered the review letter in because the Shade Tree Commission deferred to the arborist, saying that the changes were not significant enough and that the arborist could sign off.
And so have you increased the percentage of native plants, native species?
They have. In fact, if I can, if I can quote, Sedell, I put it on the screen. It says, "The applicant is utilizing a native mixture with subject cultivars. This palette will work nicely with the given, nicely given the proposed soil, native soil and site conditions. The only request I had was to substitute the scarlet oak or swamp white oak due to the bacterial leaf scorch that is present in the area." And we have agreed to that substitution.
Good, pleased to hear that. My second concern focuses on traffic, and I'm pleased to learn that, as recently as last night, if I heard you correctly, Springfield Township asked for some additional traffic calming improvements, and we agreed to make those, and so that they've been incorporated or will be incorporated. Similarly, I would hope that in the drive, the two-way drive aisle onto which the proposed bank building fronts, I would like to see some additional traffic calming there. I know that there is the existing B-bump, I guess that is, a cushion in front of the existing multi-tenant building. I know there's the two demarcated crosswalks going across that two-way drive aisle, but the bulk, or all of the parking, all of the parking, except for the handicap parking for the proposed bank, is beyond, is on the Bethlehem Pike side of the second of the two new crosswalks. And my concern is that you'll have customers, bank customers parking there, potentially those with children in tow, or the elderly, who will be approaching the bank and having to cross two lanes of traffic proceeding in opposite directions. It's a, I think, a dangerous scenario, and I think that some additional traffic calming between the second crosswalk and the parking area, another speed cushion in there would help to improve the safety for resident visiting the bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Seeing none. Krista?
Yes.
Can you speak to the concerns of the traffic study? Are you in agreement with what has been proposed?
After subsequent discussions and additional materials provided, they've satisfied my comment.
Thank you.
It should be noted, too, that the bank, we concur that it generates five trips, so the impact to the outer circulation system should be minimal.
Rob, I don't know if you can speak at all to the activity at the movie tavern. Is it, has it had much activity since it's gone in? I think movie theaters-
As I understand it, movies in general are doing pretty well of late. Just watching the news, I did hear Batman did like $124 million last weekend. So I can't speak directly to this movie tavern, but I think we should all be thankful. It sounds like movies are coming back and public wants to get out there. So I think that's wonderful to have some life back in the center, and I think that, you know, what we have demonstrated and I think that have taken into account is, this is a healthy, operating shopping center. You know, it has some unique travel patterns for anybody that goes there. A lot of that dates back to the '60s and '70s when the shopping center was developed. We actually worked, because most of that circulation is in Springfield, we have worked with Springfield for many, many years. I've been on it for 14 years, 15 years maybe now, in trying to do what we can in stages to try to address that circulation and make it the best that it can within the confines of the shopping center. And that's why some of these additional improvements down in Springfield, they'd actually been discussed years ago. Springfield kind of didn't want, didn't help us pursue it, I'll say, and now they came back and we're going to have them installed. I think what Mr. Rupp mentioned is that what we're doing now with the bank actually improves circulation in that portion of the center. The bank is a very low trip generator, so it's not causing much in terms of additional traffic, but what this project does is actually controls traffic movements in that northwestern corner. When you go there today, people cut straight across that gorshway. There's no control over that traffic. We're adding stop-controlled access from there. Our drive, our drive-up ATM also comes to stop-controlled access. And at White Marsh Township's request, we are providing that additional relief valve if it were ever to be necessary for traffic to circulate behind Mr. Pease. But again, that comes to a stop-controlled access point. So all in all, while quirky today, our project as proposed should improve traffic circulation and flow through the center and not have any detrimental impact.
And the safety with the buffers, the visibility that was brought up and the concern about safety?
Yeah, again, substantial improvements from a pedestrian and pedestrian safety standpoint. You know, we are obviously providing two entirely new pedestrian access points on Bethlehem Pike, one in the north, one in the south, much needed. They really have been needed. And by, we really couldn't provide the northern pedestrian connection until this island is being created. It now creates that safe haven to actually put that in. And so now the pedestrian has a safe way to walk from Bethlehem Pike directly to the bank and then to Mr. Pease, you know, on sidewalk and then through crosswalks. Again, ADA accessible and ADA spaces with adequate crosswalks, again, to those two pad sites. Significant improvements to, you know, to visibility, additional painting and markings and signage, all just to try and improve on the existing conditions out there today.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions? Seeing none. I would like to close this. Do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So I am going to move this down to a motion. And just a reminder, this is a vote on the conditional use. We're going to look at this in a moment again for the rest of this project. Do I have a motion to approve conditional use 01-21 Federal Realty Trust, 1842 Bethlehem Pike, for a drive-through in the VC3 Village Commercial District? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Why don't you ask for public, why don't you say there's any public comment? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Any public comment? None? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay.
You're done.
So now we're going to move this to a public discussion item for the review of the subdivision land development. Is there anything further that your team would like to present?
Chair, I don't, I don't think federal really adds anything additional to add. I'm happy to chime in. As I entered into the conditional use record, we have a review letter from the Township's engineer. I think you heard, and we have already addressed a number of those comments and concerns, and to the extent there are any remaining comments in that letter, we've indicated they are all will comply. I know the board often has to deal with a lot of requests for waivers and modifications, and you typically want to go through those one by one. I'm happy to report, I believe we only have one, and that adds to do with providing aerial image as in lieu of full topographic survey of all features surrounding the property. That is the only waiver or modification this plan is requesting.
And I assume Ms. Heinrich has no qualms with that waiver request?
I have no qualms.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Yes.
I may very briefly, again, Richard Abraham, 670 Bethlehem Pike. The only two aspects I'd like to comment on are the, what Ms. Heinrich said about the five-car trip generation increase, that's really not the significance of what is needed in a traffic impact study. That is only the additional traffic that would go out onto Bethlehem Pike, and it's not really dealing with the significance of the congestion that's going to happen right where the bank is. On the first page of the traffic study that was submitted, they say, "The study concluded the average maximum queue was 5.8 cars." Their plan does, shows that they do not have room for 5.8 cars. If 5.8 cars is accurate, as their study says it is, then a car will jut out into the major ingress and egress from this shopping center out onto Bethlehem Pike. That will create an absolute nightmare because either the traffic will have to go around the, into the handicap lanes to get around the stacked cars going into the entrance and exit lanes, or they're going to have to just stop there and wait until whoever is at the bank finishes their business and the line gets shorter. So I think the fact that there is no study with any data more recent than 2012, which doesn't take into consideration the movie or COVID, is a gross lack of information required to put this bank at that location. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-10 granting conditional preliminary slash final plan approval for subdivision land development 02-20 Federal Realty Trust 1842 Bethlehem Pike Flower Town Shopping Center for a minor land development for a new bank with a drive-through?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mallor, call the roll, please.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair Mester?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your time with that. Moving on to our next public board discussion item is the review of the DCNR DVR PC feasibility study, which is the Miracle Nature Trail.
Good evening. I'm Judy Stern-Goldstein with Gilmore and Associates. With me is Emily Paszkowicz from Gilmore Associates and Bob Thomas from Campbell, Thomas and Company. Together, we comprise the project team for the Miracle Nature Trail feasibility study, and we're proud and pleased to present that study to you tonight. It represents the hard work, not only of the project team, but significant, significant time and energy from the township, the steering committee, stakeholders, residents, and interested parties.
Can we hold on one second? Can you share your screen, Charlie, on Zoom, please?
I'm sorry.
Just so the Zoom participants can see as well.
Can we do that in slideshow mode, too?
Sure.
Thank you. And is that up on Zoom now?
It is.
Great, thank you. Just briefly, as we start, I'd like to just talk about the project goals for the study. And this is a feasibility study, and the goals were simple. There were two of them. One, to determine the feasibility and desirability of a trail within the Pico right-of-way. And the second was determine, determine the feasibility and desirability of the miracle nature concept for that potential trail. And this is a feasibility study. We included a lot more words on our slides, knowing that would be posted for public. I'm not going to read the slides. You all know how to read. I'm going to give the salient information. So this is a feasibility study, not an engineering study. That's the major difference. No engineering plans, no construction plans. This is determined the go-no-go option for the township. The site is located within the Pico right-of-way from Butler Pike down to East Hector Street. It's bisected by Well Street. It's adjacent to the Cedar Grove Park, the Well Street open space area, neighborhood, neighborhood on the one side, natural areas down below. And the miracle nature concept would be dividing the site. The top portion from Butler Pike down to Wells would be the miracle concept, and the lower portion from Wells down to East Hector would be the nature portion. The miracle concept is based on accessibility and inclusiveness, much like the terms you've heard, miracle league, miracle field. The nature concept is really about reconnecting with nature, having a low-impact trail that respects the natural environment, and there is significant environment, significant natural resources in that area. The steering committee was a hard-working group comprised of 17 individuals representing cross-section of the township. Many members of township boards and commissions, interested public and other stakeholders were members of the committee, and it was chaired by Bob Shoemaker. Project timeline, a lot has happened in the last two years. The project started just before the world shut down for COVID. We, as a project team, regrouped, developed ways to interact with the public virtually. Everything on this project was done virtually except for the public walking tour, the neighbors' focus group meeting, and the presentation of the park board, which was just in February. The timeline included four steering committee member, four steering committee meetings, a public survey, we had 508 respondents online for that public survey, key person interviews, two public presentations and listening sessions, a neighbors' focus group meeting, an in-person walking tour of the site in July, and a presentation to the park board in February, culminating with our presentation to you this evening. With that, I want to turn it over to Bob Thomas for some brief history of the project. And Emily, you'll forward that for Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Yeah, we're taking a look here, this is an 1893 map. The area we're looking at in White Marsh is still very rural. Here's the stream valley, goes up there, the road heading up towards public meeting. And the area that we're looking at is really all the right-of-ways right in here. And of course, this railroad now, one is the Reading and the other is the Pennsylvania Line, which of course is now the Schuylkill River Trail, linked to the Miracle Nature Trail. Next, please.
Bob, can you use the mic?
Yes.
You got it, it's in there. Can't go to it.
All right, well, let's see. Okay. I guess that's necessary for the, yeah, sorry about that. All righty, this is a plan that we worked on with the township. This was the Township Wide Walking and Biking Plan back in the early 2000s. And what you see, of course, is a whole list of upgrading pads and whatnot, but you can see the major trail that's been identified along the Pico right-of-way up there. Good, next, please. And then finally, as we get into, let's say, the modern era, we're looking at, of course, is a major effort, not only on the part of White Marsh, but the entire county of Montgomery, to create a wonderful trail system. And these are trails all identified. There's White Marsh Township, Plymouth, Springfield. You can see the Wistah Hicken Trail, the Cross County Trail, and the Schuylkill River Trail. And of course, the major system of trails works only if you have a lot of connections right into neighborhoods, schools, shopping, churches, synagogues, other points of interest, and that would be right in that area there. Okay, thank you very much.
So as you can see above, we developed a site analysis plan. This plan utilizes existing features as well as site context to highlight opportunities and constraints for trail development. So there are little red dashed circles. Those are circling Pico utility poles and utility structures. I'll be talking about those and their specific constraints a little bit more on the next slide. In general, the site, as Judy mentioned, is bisected into two halves with Well Street representing the midpoint. So the northern half of the site, which is shown on the upper portion of the plan, is generally characterized by gently sloping topography and open field conditions. The southern half of the site, which is shown in the lower portion of the plan, is characterized more so by dramatically sloping terrain. It also has several areas of thick brush and meadow area, which serve as habitat for many different species of wildlife. And then, for the purposes of our study area, the site terminates at East Hector Street. However, it is important to note that there are existing sidewalks that run along East Hector Street, as well as pedestrian crossing amenities at the intersection of East Hector and Station Ave for potential trail users to utilize to access both the Schuylkill River Trail and Spring Mills Septa Station. So as I mentioned earlier, Pico was a major player in this study and this project overall. Pico was contacted about the utility corridor very early on, and during this conversation, we inquired about both their general guidelines for secondary uses within their utility corridors, as well as their requirements for this specific site. So what they returned to us at the time were that all improvements that are going to be put on the site should be located towards the western edge of the site, and any and all improvements should be located 25 feet or greater away from any Pico equipment and structures. As I mentioned, with the topography and some of the, some of the sensitive environmental features on site, there were many environmental things to consider here as well. Deb Shroo from the Environmental Advisory Board served on our steering committee and worked really closely with us to ensure that our recommendations reflected the site's sensitive topography and features. So these represent just a sampling of some of the recommendations and considerations that we included as part of the final plan. So these include utilizing trail surface aggregate, which is a pervious trail material wherever possible, aligning the trail in such a way to minimize disturbance to brush and other undisturbed areas. And then moving a little further down the process, once we are getting into stormwater management, we plan to use specific stormwater management best practices that can increase infiltration and avoid additional disturbance on the site. Similarly, only native plants will be recommended for any revegetation or landscaping that is proposed on site, and in base, we are recommending that an invasive species management plan be prepared for the site for its long-term maintenance. So as you could see from the site analysis plan and looking at this utility corridor on any aerial, you'll be able to see that it has numerous residential neighbors. So with this in mind, we held a focus group in late August of 2021 in which all immediate neighbors of the site were invited to come out, hear about the project, ask questions, and offer feedback. So these are the most common, the most common feedback that we received from the neighbors, both during the focus group and throughout the process. There were a lot of comments about alignment and concerns about the trail being located directly or too close to anyone's property line or backyard, buffering for both people's property lines and the trail itself, lighting for the trail, security, and concerns about preserving the natural character of the site overall. So with all of this taken into consideration, our study found that pending confirmation of the current standards and Pico's approval, a trail within the utility corridor was found to be both feasible and desirable for the majority of the public. Similarly, the miracle nature concept of the trail was also found to be feasible and desirable. And so as you can see above, our final plan developed this recommended alignment, and it reflects a combination of Pico's requirements for the site, as well as feedback that we heard throughout the study process from the neighbors, with some additional consideration for topographic and environmental considerations. So wherever possible, we tried to respect the wishes of neighbors by shifting the trail as far away from those property lines located along the western edge of the site as possible, while still respecting Pico's wish to press it towards the western side of the site.
So the big player in the room is Pico. This is Pico's right-of-way. We acknowledge that it's their property, and their mission is to deliver electricity to the service holders in the area and beyond the area. So the first step, once this feasibility study is approved, is to sit down and meet with Pico and review their current regulations with respect to the trail, and coordinate and work with Pico to go through that regulatory process with them before we continue any farther. So that would be the first step of the next step of the plan. And they are essential, and we believe that the working relationship that was developed long ago will continue to be a healthy working relationship. Budgetary cost, it's always good to know what something will cost. In $2022, it's approximately a $3.3 million project. There are various funding options available. It's important to note that to date, this project has already received grants for the feasibility study from both DVR PC and from DCNR. It's likely, since the project has been successful, that further funding would be available from those agencies as well as others, some of which are listed on the slide. In the report, there's a full section on potential funding sources. Key implementation steps, can't say it enough, the first step after this is to address the Pico issues, meet with them, further guidance, and go through their regulatory procedures. Then go into detailed construction documentation, bidding documents, send it out to bid, award the bids, construct the trail, have a wonderful ribbon cutting for the trail, and develop a plan for the long-term maintenance of the trail. Trail benefits, don't really need to cite them to you, I'm sure you all know the trail benefits, but health, welfare benefits, connectivity, active transportation, inclusion, recreation, health, environmental education, economic, and the social benefits of the trail, none of which can be underrated. Timeline looking ahead, any feedback from this evening will be compiled and documented in the report if, if there are any feedback necessary. Adoption of the final feasibility study, close out the grant, and meet the final terms of the grant, digital copies, print copies, and most importantly, move on to the next phase. With that, on behalf of the entire project team, the steering committee, the steering committee, and all of the residents that came out and everyone that worked on this, we say thank you.
Thank you so much, Judy.
You're welcome. And we're here for questions.
It's an impressive study. You have, you and your team have done an amazing job, truly, and worked so well with the community. I just thank you for all of the time and the efforts that you have put forth for it. It's an exciting opportunity.
I thank you. And I forgot to mention one of the most important people of the, of the project. He's been sitting back there quietly, just, you know, making everything happen. That's Tom Blumstrom, your Park and Rec Director. And I'm sorry he didn't get top billing, but he's been an integral part of it. We've adopted him. He's going to be part of our project team forever.
Thank you. Are there any board questions? Do we have any public questions?
May I ask a question, Judy?
Yes. I think this is-
Sidell though, in Hartbridge Road. Could I ask the consultants to put up one of the slides that would depict where public access, marked public access would be available, including public parking?
I'm trying to think if this is the best one to do it on. I think it is. Public access would be provided up near Wawa along Butler Pike. There's, the plan includes the proposal for a trailhead in that area, so there would be public access to the trail from there. Also, at the downhill end at Hector Street and on both sides of Well Street, they would be public access points delineated and defined.
And is there any provision for parking, off-street parking for the public at these, at these trailheads or access points?
The, the trailhead would be an access point for public parking. There's also a connection to Cedar Grove Park. There would be parking available there. And on-street parking, where it exists on Well Street, would be available also.
And will the entire length of the trail be, meet ADA requirements?
The, the trail would be designed in accordance with ADA standards, and the increased inclusiveness aspect would be included on the miracle, the miracle portion of the Miracle Nature Trail.
So at the southern end, where you have those switchbacks over the steeply sloped terrain, will those, that part of the trail be accessible?
It would be designed in accordance with ADA standards, so it would meet ADA.
Okay. And I assume that's the reason for those dramatic switchbacks, to ensure ADA compliance?
That is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sidell.
Any other comments? Questions? I mean, this, as Judy has been saying, and- I mean, as Judy has been saying, and Emily and Tom, this is step one and many more steps to come. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to move this down to a resolution vote. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-11, approving the DCNR-DVR-PC feasibility study for the Miracle Nature Trail Grant Project?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller, will you please call roll?
Mr. McCuster?
Yes.
Ms. Tolt?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yeah.
Chair Nester?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excited for the next step. Okay, next on our public board discussion items is the review of the traffic study for Chestnut.
I don't think I did it.
We might have to give it one minute here.
While he's doing that, I'll introduce myself. My name is Leslie Bogdanoff. I'm a traffic engineer with Gilmore, and I'm here to present about the traffic calming along Chestnut Street.
I lost the Zoom. I have to get back-
You're going to have to log back in.
I'm sorry?
You have to log back into the Zoom.
I know. That's what I'm... Probably had to do that quickly. No, I can't do it without getting back into... I don't have the link in my calendar.
Do you have some access?
No, not anymore. That's the problem.
I'll send it to your Charlie.
For those of you that are participating virtually, we're just logging back into the system here. Appreciate your patience. This is the time to go get a drink of water, feel free to move about the room, take a stretch break.
I sent it to your email, Charlie.
Except the board, you can't go anywhere. Okay?
Come on.
Rick sent it to your email.
Please send it to me. Thank you, Rick. My apologies.
No worries.
You didn't share your screen.
Yeah, I will. There you go. You got it. Everybody needed a break for this.
I'm sure it's all good.
All right. Are we good? Good to go now?
Vince left.
All right. So as I said, I'm here to present about the traffic calming on Chestnut Street. Just some background about that. We were tasked with evaluating if any traffic calming measures were warranted along Chestnut Street, given that some resident concerns were brought up regarding speeding and cut-through traffic along Chestnut Street. Here's a location map. As you can see, it's just right up the street from where we are now. Chestnut Street runs between Ridge Pike and Germantown Pike. It's a short segment, approximately 1,200 feet. It intersects Germantown Pike at a stop-controlled intersection to the north, and then Ridge Pike at a signalized intersection at the south. It's approximately 21 feet wide throughout the entire segment, and parking is generally permitted throughout, with the exception of the northern end adjacent to the parking lot right near Germantown Pike, where parking is restricted there. So just an overview of the roadway characteristics. The speed limit currently is posted at 25 miles an hour. The police department collected speed data along the roadway segment. They provided that data to us, which revealed that the 85th percentile speed heading northbound was 37 miles an hour, and heading southbound was 34 miles per hour. So with local and state guidelines, when you have a minimum of 5 to 10 miles per hour over the posted speed limit, when your 85th percentile speed is within 5 to 10 over the posted, then you are able to consider traffic calming on that roadway segment. So given those speeds, we can definitely look at some measures along this segment. So what we looked at was, of course, speed bumps, which I'm sure that many of you are familiar with. Chicanes, which is the photo in the middle here, which is a series of curb bumpouts that create an S curve, which then reduces speeds because motorists are required to navigate this turn. And one-way operation was also considered, which is good in reducing cut-through traffic. However, one-way operation does have the negative effect on speeding, because it actually gives you the perception of a wider road, since you don't have traffic going in both directions. So looking at those measures, we do recommend speed bumps in this location, which I will talk about on the next slide. Chicanes were not an option here, because we only have 21 feet of cartway width, so you'd have to widen the road if that were to be an option here. And as I said, the one-way operation, we wouldn't recommend, because it actually tends to increase speeds. Another concern was brought up regarding vehicles speeding towards the traffic light at Ridge Pike. So as motorists are heading southbound towards Ridge, they're able to see the traffic light. So if it's green or even yellow, they might, you know, step on the gas to try and beat the light. So another recommendation, we have to address that, is to install louvers, which would go into the existing signal heads facing northbound for the southbound approaching traffic. And what they do is, they reduce the angle of visibility for approaching vehicles until they are an appropriate distance from the intersection. So if you're driving down Chestnut, and you're halfway down, you won't be able to see whether it's red, green, or yellow. So that eliminates the opportunity for these cars to speed, because they're trying to, you know, quick get the light before it turns red. So here is a location map, which shows our recommendations. We recommend installing a series of three speed humps along the roadway segment. They tend to be more effective when you install a series of them versus just one or even two. There are requirements for spacing adjacent to signalized and unsignalized intersections, so that's taken into account here. And in addition, at each speed hump location, we recommend the speed hump warning signage, as you can see on the plan here, which is a requirement. And this is just a preliminary layout, so if the township did move forward with these recommendations, we could speak with the Public Works Department to ensure that we're installing those at an appropriate location. Here are examples of our recommendations. On the left, this is an example of a rubber speed hump, which, of course, those are great because they can be removed in the winter for, you know, maintenance issues, or also they can be removed if they're no longer needed. Asphalt speed humps are also definitely an option. That's just a preference. And then on the right, you can see, this is an example of a louver, which, as I mentioned, just gets installed in the existing signal heads, and it limits the angle of visibility. So as far as our recommendations for traffic calming, that pretty much sums it up. The only other two things we discussed in our report were about the parking and some truck restrictions, which we are going to continue to speak to the township about. The parking restrictions, right now, are sort of unclear, so we just wanted to not restrict parking on the roadway segment, but maybe ensure that there's no area where parking is permitted on both sides, because of the narrow cartway width that would only leave about five feet. And regarding the truck restriction, I know right now it's posted at Ridge. Once you turn off of Ridge onto Chestnut Street, there's a truck restriction. However, there isn't one at Germantown, so that's something to consider and ensure that the appropriate signage is out there. So, does anyone have any questions?
And then if I could also point out, with the speed humps, it appears that they're warranted, but there's one more policy requirement of PENDOT, which is the policy that we follow. And that is that we conduct a public survey, where 70% of the households and businesses have to approve of it. So that would be the next step that we would take, and it's possible that we'll come in under 70%, and then they become unwarranted. So that's one ask that we have of you tonight, is to consider authorizing that study.
Thank you. Public or board comments?
Not yet.
I'd like to hear what the-
What the public, so would I.
Yes.
Public comments?
Me as well.
Come on up, please.
I have a comment.
Can we maybe do the in-person first, and then the Zoom, so we're-
Sure. Yep. We're going to, in case you didn't hear that, we're going to start with the people that are in person, and then we will definitely be circling back to those that are attending virtually.
Okay. I think this is really good-
If you could please just state your name.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My name is Donna Kobe. I live at 3008 Chestnut Street, so this definitely does affect me, okay? I have been on this street since 1981. I have seen this street change over the years. The reason, I think, that so many of the neighbors right now, and I totally agree with this, are upset, is this neighborhood has changed. When I moved into this neighborhood, it was my daughter and one other girl on the street, as far as children went. We have, our neighborhood is changing, and we have a lot of children being born on our street, you know, people who are like my age and a little younger, having grandchildren. You know, I see we had the study, but there are times that maybe it's not school time, like on the weekend. I've seen people go down that road at 60 miles an hour. I mean, this is really something very, very frightening. My fear is someday, someone's going to get hit or killed. And I couldn't live with it if I didn't speak up. I do think some of the ideas that are presented is great. I had an incident myself a couple weeks ago. My husband and I were coming into Chestnut Street, and we were almost hit by someone coming down from Germantown Pike, who was trying to make the light and speed it up, almost hit us head-on. And we, I mean, we had the arrow and everything, you know, the green light, but the thing of it is, these are things. The other thing that I noticed myself the last few weeks, where the speed bar is for Chestnut Street at that light, that is very narrow to get in there, okay? If they were to bring that back, it's actually, it sits at the second post on the fence there, on the house on the corner. If they could bring that back to right between the third and fourth post, which is probably another eight feet, I think the cars on Chestnut Street would be back far enough, then hopefully this could avoid an accident, because there's a lot of, like I say, people who come around that corner, and they cut it way too wide. But that's what my husband and I personally have been trying. But I thought, you know, you're not going to think about that till all of a sudden somebody almost hits you. So why not, you know, maybe try something like that? That's minor. That's a coat of paint. That's a very easy thing in that sense. But the biggest thing to me is the speed, and we have to calm the speed down. And I think having the police presence the last few weeks has been a help, a help, but it just hasn't gotten it yet. Maybe we need more tickets given out. I hate to say that, you know? And I appreciate that the township is trying to make an effort to resolve our situation. The only thing I have a question of this lady for is one of the speed bumps. Now, I know the metal, not metal, excuse me, the asphalt speed bumps are very noisy. Now, these other ones are a lot quieter, correct?
I can't speak to that exactly, but I do hear that the rubber ones as well, that they do have a noise component. I mean, the speed humps, the asphalt ones, actually tend to be quieter than a speed bump, because they are wider and they have a larger parabolic shape, so... But in terms of comparing the two, I would imagine they're pretty comparable.
Okay. My other question for you is, if you were to put something like that up, there is a water problem on Chestnut Street also. There is a big water flow that comes from back, well, it's hard for me to explain it to you, but it comes from behind where the houses are on the one side of Chestnut Street. And not only does my house, like, the houses along my area get it, but so do the ones over on the other side, you know, we get all that runoff. And a lot of times, we get pooling water. And is that not going to cause that stuff to be more slippery if they put that there? I mean, I don't know, because I've really never dealt with that.
Are you saying would the speed humps create more of an issue?
More of an issue for two reasons, making it more slippery and making more problem with flooding.
Well, the speed humps don't get constructed the full width of the road. They are tapered off on the end, so in terms of, I mean, I can't speak to what's happening out there right now with the drainage, but they do allow the flow to continue, you know, on either side of the road. And just like the road or the asphalt, you know, in the winter, they all get salted. Also, I think I mentioned this, but the rubber speed humps can be removed in the winter or, you know, in advance of storms, so that-
So if we know we have something major-
Yes, and that's, you know, the preference of the Public Works Department, but they are removable if you do choose the rubber option, which is a plus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Were there other public comments here? Yes, please, come on up.
My name's Joe Ryan. I've lived on the streets since 1974. When you did the survey, the speed survey, you put both meters at the one end of the street, within 50 feet of the end of the street. You didn't put them down the middle of the street, where they gain all the speed going down the street. I'd say the speed is a lot more prevalent than 34, 35 miles an hour. I've seen people fly down there at 50, 60. You know, I've almost been killed a couple of times, just putting my trash out. Secondly, have you done a study about stop signs instead of speed bumps? You could put a three-way stop at the end of St. Phillips' driveway. That would be a lot quieter, not have a problem with flooding, and it might solve the problem. If people knew there was a stop sign down there, it would take a lot of traffic out of there and slow traffic down. You could put signs up saying, stop signs ahead, put flashers on the stop signs.
So to answer that question first, stop signs actually aren't an approved traffic calming method, and people will actually tend to just blow right through the stop sign, knowing that that's why they're not a traffic calming method, because people who are familiar with the area know that you're installing that for that reason, and they'll just roll right through or blow through them. So they are not an approved, you can't just simply install a stop sign for that purpose. It has to be warranted based on other requirements.
Well, with the speed bumps, your proposal puts one right out in front of my house.
I just mentioned again that was preliminary.
And my house is 10 feet from the road. Most of those houses are within 10 feet. You put those speed bumps there, and in the summertime, we have our windows open, boom, 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 and you got a lot of trucks, a lot of trailers going down the street. It'd be very noisy. It'd be very noisy. I mean, I understand it's to slow the traffic down, but it, it causes another problem.
Yeah, and this is also where the resident survey will come into play here. So it's definitely not a quiet option, but that there aren't many options when you're dealing with this and, and trying to, you know, reduce the speeds and increase safety here. There's only so many things you can, that we're working with.
How about making the street one-way?
As I mentioned, that actually increases speeds when you use one-way operation. So, so we could, you know, look at going towards Ridge or Germantown. But regardless, when you're taking away two-way traffic flow, it actually makes the speed data go up because now you're driving on a wider roadway. And that's typically what you're looking for with traffic calming is reducing that cartway width because when you have a wide-open roadway, that's what makes motorists feel more comfortable with the travel.
Well, living on the street, most of the traffic I notice is in the afternoon, from 3:30 till about 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock. There's a line of traffic from Germantown Pike halfway down the street and it's coming from Ridge Pike to Germantown. You get past the traffic on Ridge Pike heading into Philadelphia. Now, that's, I've lived there for, you know, 45 years, so. That's my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
A quick follow-up for you. Have you evaluated whether the warrant requirements are met or could be met with respect to that three-way stop sign?
So warrants for that would be based on traffic volume, sight distance. But the problem is that you're likely not going to have any, have it met by traffic volumes because you don't really have anything. That's technically a driveway. It's not necessarily a street intersection. And again, when you're looking at traffic calming, it's just not an approved method. But again, like I said, it is a driveway and you're not gonna meet warrants for, there's no sight distance issue there looking left or right. So that would warrant a stop sign there. So yeah, that, that wouldn't be recommended.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, it's Kim Swider at 3009 Chestnut Street. So based on the last meeting and the information, and I don't know if he's on the Zoom that, that Bob said gave on the speed bumps, it was kind of enlightening with the water issue. And I did discuss it with my parents, who I kind of represent as they're the homeowners on the street. I just live on the street. So a couple of things based on the feedback. I do think that there are, and I see the survey. So the comments I want to make is first off, I was happy to see that the speed signs go up, but I do agree, I mentioned in the last meeting, they, they continue to put them at the end of the street. I don't understand it. There's telephone poles with power in, in the middle where they pick up speed. Based on that last presentation of yours, you can see the street pretty good. The, the speed peaks in the middle and it is, I, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm gonna say 80. I've witnessed 80, they fly. The, I'd say the average is closer to 45 to 55 miles an hour and not 35 in the middle of the street. They come on from Germantown. They're pretty slow because it's a really rough, that, that, that is a whole other topic, that intersection. They turn on and they are pretty slow and then they can't see the light because of the incline and they pick up right about where that tree is, right before St. Phillips. And they fly from that side down. But as Bob said, the street is noisy because the majority of the houses, except for ours and one other, they all sit on the street. And they need that parking because they need, if they have visitors, they need parking. So you can't restrict people's parking on the street. If, if they sit back, and, and not that people are excessively parking, but they do park at times. They have guests or they have a visitor or a drop-off or something or they have a delivery, UPS or Amazon. People do need to park on the street. So my feedback is, I feel like the survey was really not justice as far as the speed goes. My comments are, I think that the suggestions with the stop sign three-way immediately at St. Phillips is a help. There is a huge volume of the street traffic that comes from parents dropping off their kids. And they come up the driveway and there is not a stop sign. So they jut into traffic and people are speeding and we've got a messy situation there. So I do feel there should be that three-way stop. Because I think that they're speeding, but I also think that it has picked up because it's a cut-through. And I feel like if you deter the volume through the cut-through, you might reduce some speed. You get the stop sign. And I think the biggest things that I feel, and I know they're state roads and that is really a challenge, but I feel that Ridge onto Chestnut, that light should be an arrow. I feel that there should be a light or a three-way stop sign down at Germantown. That Germantown intersection is horrible. Cars do cut through and they cannot turn left. It's, it's really hard. And if you're on Germantown and you're trying to turn right onto Chestnut, they, right now it's empty, but a lot of people just drive through the parking lot of the White Marsh because they, they cannot get onto the street because as Donna said, the cars have to stop right at the stop sign. So, and if you're coming towards the light on Ridge, it would be beneficial to have people stop a car lens back because they do come turning onward and they, and they clip into people. So, I mean, I do think we need anything. I think the immediate thing out of this survey, are the louvers on the lights very beneficial? I'm not sure about the speed bumps. I'm concerned at noise. It's a noisy street, like at night. The, the cars, you can hear them flying down the street and I think then you're gonna add a bump and it's just gonna be like, boom, 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 boom. That, that's my feedback.
Thank you. Was there anybody here in the room that wanted to speak? Okay, going to the virtual room. Was there anybody here that wanted to speak? That's, go ahead.
Your question must be, I live at 3016 Chestnut Street. I, like the rest of the neighbors, would prefer the three-way stop sign because it is the middle of the street, so it is a mild deterrent. And I understand that you know that it's not the correct way for you to do the slowing of the speed. But I also noticed that when you posted the your speed signs, people are generally honest and they don't know how fast they go. So when they are recognizing how fast they're going, they do slow down. So I don't understand why the your speed signs are not being solar powered and being installed indefinitely. So they're, they're, they're all, their battery pack, their pack only lasts three or four days and then it expires and then it's not, they're not recovered efficiently enough. But people do reduce their speed, especially from, if they're coming, if they're coming from the Ridge onto Chestnut and they see their speed is posted, they do slow down. Unfortunately, when we're coming from the Germantown to Chestnut, it's too close. So the, the speed, the speed is not being able to be captured. So there are other telephone calls to attach it to, but I don't understand why that's not also being used as an option. Because most of the majority of the ten, of the homeowners on Chestnut Street do not want speed humps because of all of the reasons already listed. We're very close to the street. It's already a very noisy street. I think that the louvers on the, the street light will dramatically reduce the speeding to try to catch the light. And also your proposal of having the no trucks down Chestnut Street will also be very helpful. That being said, a lot of people have their, their yards landscaped so you have the land steeper trucks. So I don't know where, where the truck thing stops. So moving on to the speed hump, which you guys are really pressing hard on. If you're not, speed humps typically do not go shoulder to shoulder. And you know how narrow the road is. So if you're not gonna go shoulder to shoulder, what's gonna happen is the same thing that happens on Bell's Mills with those speed humps. People go to the left or to the right to only get two wheels, not four wheels on the speed hump. So now you're pushing cars into other people's yards or, and asphalt sidewalks. That's their only sacred space. Now you're pushing those cars into those homes because they're gonna try to avoid the speed hump. So it may be a deterrent in generality, but the road's not wide enough to support the speed hump knowing people's behavior. But we know people's behavior that they stop at stop signs and you're saying, you know, maybe a minority might blow through it. But then you can bring back the police presence and enforce the speed sign, the, the stop sign. Because then if they blow through the, the stop sign, then they have committed an offense. And then now that can be a ticketed offense. Not saying that I'm trying to promote ticketing, but the speed hump, the way that people drive, they don't go on all four wheels on, on the speed humps. So I know that you can remove them in the wintertime, which is great, but it, it, it's, it's going to be create and then a new, a new, a new dangerous situation for the residents. I have two small children. I have to, every day, walk out of my house, try not to get run over, to go to St. Phillips, drop my kids off at school. And then the same way, at pickup time, at 3 o'clock. So I'm very hyper-aware of the traffic on Chestnut Street. And I don't think the speed hump is the correct way. I think that the louvers on the stoplight is awesome. I think the no trucks is great and I think that the, the triple stop is the better way to go for the safety of the residents. Because there aren't any sidewalks. We only have asphalt sidewalks. And I don't think that you're taking that into account. And I know that, that, you know, you have your own set of studies, but what you're not taking into account is the individuality of Chestnut Street.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Can I say something?
Yes, is that Joy Jacobs? I couldn't.
Joy Jacobs, yes. I'm 451 Ridge Pike. I am the corner house of Ridge and Chestnut. I've looked over the engineering report as well as Chief Ward's report and the traffic study. Just a few things that I'd like to mention. You know, as the previous neighbors have mentioned, that, that having, reading the traffic study, it appears that doing the southbound report, the location was at 3014 Chestnut Street, where it was placed. Now, that is halfway up the block. That is closer to St. Philip. And as the neighbors have said, you know, once you get down towards where my home is, people see that light, they're shooting for it. They're gas to the pedal. So if they were doing, on average, as it says, 34, at that point, I can only imagine what they were as they got closer to the bottom of the street. You know, a lot of what the engineer report says, I absolutely agree with. I know the neighbors are against the speed humps, you know, a majority of them, but they're not taking into account that this is a speed hump, not a speed bump. They do not make the noise. And quite honestly, we are on Chestnut and Ridge, right between Ridge and Germantown. We get noise already. The humps do not make nearly the noise that having a stop sign would place when people are honking because people aren't going fast enough for that. You know, then we'll have that issue to deal with. Stop signs in the middle of the block are not taking, are not making people slow down. They'll rush up, stop, then go again and, and ram right back up. That's if they stop at all. If they don't see anybody, they're gonna do the roll through. And yeah, you can put police there. We don't have a big police force where they can sit there always. If they come, you know, once a month, one day, that still leaves 29 days where people are gonna say, hmm, let me just go, I'm in a rush. The speed humps at least give people reason to pause. And people do not go and, you know, gun it down because something's gonna happen to their car if they go too fast. And they realize that. Nobody is going to speed up and over them. They do not go around them if they are wide enough. And in our street, you wouldn't need to put a break between the middle for people to go two tiles up. That is only on an extra-large street. As far as the louver go, I think that's a fantastic idea. You know, it, it may give people a reason to slow down. But again, if you can see far enough in your peripheral vision and see that, you know, people are stopped at Ridge Avenue, they're gonna say, oh, that must be a green for me. And then it might not be a green when they get there and then we'll have accidents because people are gonna assume that it's green if they see traffic on Ridge stop at the time that they're far enough back. As far as the one-way direction, you know, that was something that I had mentioned in our previous Zoom meeting. And that would only work, you know, as you stated in the study. Yes, it, it would make the cut-through traffic go faster. However, in conjunction with the speed humps, it would again alleviate traffic concerns and make, and have people slow down while on the one-way. Again, we have a narrow street. I don't know if anybody's run into this, but I've seen it quite a few times. Some people actually already assume our street is one-way and at the light, you will see two people side by side and I'll go, oh, Jesus, here we go. And then finally someone will back up to get behind the other car. So, you know, it's a very narrow turn as it is. So when people are coming off a bridge, you know, you're hopping up on the curb. I'm having people go up on my curb to make the right, you know, to move over. Even pushing that white line back, which, let me tell you, nobody obeys the white line as it is. They already are above the white line. You can push it back a few feet, but it's still a very narrow turn, particularly when we have buses that come up our street. You know, I think if we had something with the conjunction of one-way and the speed humps, it would, you know, make the street a little wider, particularly for people coming onto Ger, onto Chestnut from Germantown so that they're not making it so wide of a turn into the White Marsh or the old White Marsh restaurant. The St. Phillips driveway, that's a 20-minute in the morning, 20-minute in the afternoon. It's not all day and that's where our main issue is, the majority of the day. It's the full street that needs to be protected, not just the middle of the block. I understand as a homeowner, you want in front of your home protected, but we need to protect the entire street, not just in front of St. Phillips area. You know, I think that, you know, as far as Bell's Mills, that is now one-way. I don't know if any of you recall, but there was a time period when that was two ways right off of Germantown Pike. They made it one-way, people have become accustomed to it. So, you know, things do change and, and you, and you learn to get along with it. But stop signs, they're not gonna do anything. People will roll right through them. Speed humps, not very noisy. We already have our fair share of noise and this will not add any, you know, extra noise. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments virtually?
My name is Susan Shizinski. I live at 3012 Chestnut Street. I've been living here for three years, so I'm a newer resident. I'm also younger, I'm 32. And I agree with the others that 35 miles an hour is very inaccurate. If you look at the photo that we're looking at right now on the screen, you can see that you can see fully down the street. So as you approach those trashcans that are laying in the street, you can easily see a cop car sitting where St. Phillips is. So all of the cars definitely slowed down for that cop car. I believe that it is closer to 60 miles an hour. I would just, I, I am in favor of the speed humps, but I would also like to throw out the idea that possibly if we could block the street at Germantown and make it a dead end so that we could only use the access point from Ridge with the light. I think that that would solve more problems rather than making it one-way, I think that that would solve more problems rather than making it one-way, which would just affect everybody in the same way. But if we made it a dead end, then only the residents on the street could use the street. We would all be respectful of each other and, you know, we wouldn't have to deal with the speed humps or the honking or just in general speeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one more comment.
Hold on, do you mind one second? We just want to give the virtual people another chance. Yep. Vera, did you have a comment?
This is Steve Seg. Vera and I are together at 316, along with other properties that I own. The one-way system I suggested last month, and much like what was just suggested of the dead end, in fair of all business, it would have to be ended at White Marsh Valley's parking lot, so they can actually have business, because they can't have this one-way, and it is a business. But also, the speed bumps, it seems like most people are definitely against them. It's the people who actually live on this street, not on Ridge, that are against the speed bumps. The stop signs will make it much easier to police an incident and protect it along with the stop signs. And another note, if we're worried about not having enough police, we're already advertising or hiring, let's go ahead and make a board moment and, huh, extra cops. There's nothing wrong with having too much cops. So why not?
Thank you.
I also still have one more comment. So just to clarify, I did misspoke. It was, it's Gravers Mills when you turn left, it's not Bell's Mills, so I apologize for that mistake. So Bell's Mills, when you turn down Bell's Mills, they have four speed humps. Now, I know that road is extremely wider than Chestnut, but I drive a significant...
Springway.
No, it's Springway. I drive a significant amount, so I do know that when you put the, when you put the speed humps and they're not, they cannot be shoulder to shoulder, and there's nothing, there's no cut through in the middle, it's just one big hump. People do go veer to the right and veer to the left. So my fear is if you put in even a rubber speed hump, regardless of where you place it on the street, people will veer right and veer left, and they will veer right and veer left into the yards of the homes who sit on the street. So that is, for me, a concern, it's a safety concern. The people just don't want, they don't want their whole car going up on the hump. I don't like my whole car going up on the hump. So that's just a safety concern. I think that township really needs to put pen to paper, put it down on your notes, and remember that behavioral aspect of speed humps when you are proposing a slowdown on Chestnut Street. And that's just my final comment.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Did you have?
Yeah, I just...
Yep.
Sorry, it's Kim Sweater again at 3009 Chestnut Street. Sorry, I should have looked at my notes. So I did, I do think it sounds like everyone's in agreement, maybe it's multiple things that are needed, but I think immediately, and I couldn't hear so well the one lady, but I do think the signs immediately, it's cheap, it's quick, there's literally two signs, one at each end, 25. I think if we could throw up a couple extra signs to alert people of the speed, sometimes you do forget, and you look, and you're like, oh, I'll look and see, maybe that brings down some slowing of traffic. There's also no signs but one about watching children. I mean, I brought this up before, and I think it's another good point. It technically is a school zone. It is not coded a school zone. I don't understand it. Germantown's a school zone, but Ridge and Chestnut, there's a lot of kids walking and grand, people walking, grandkids, and I feel that to combat some of the traffic and the speed is to attack Google Maps and Waze. And I think that they drag people through the street because it is a cut through, and I feel like if it was a designated school zone, even though it really only impacts the morning, and there's not as much 3 o'clock traffic on the street, there is 4:00 and 5:00. I do feel like the morning, it would deter Google Maps maybe sending people, or people might say, I'm not going to cut through there anymore because it's a school zone. And if we can't get school zone official lights, maybe it's just some signs alerting people that there are kids and it is a school zone. And the last thing I do bring up is, I don't know what it would take, but I do think a light or a three-way stop at Germantown and Chestnut is really something to look at. And it's not only from the traffic and speed on the street, but it adds a safe crosswalk because there's nowhere safely to cross, and I brought this up last time, between Joshua and up here, there's nowhere, and you cannot stop, and it's really not safe, you can't cross the street. So just, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I got kicked off. Now I'm back on. Sorry. I appreciate everybody's comments. Were there other comments?
I have a few more questions.
You have a few more questions. So we've heard a portion of the residents from Chestnut. Before we, go ahead, do you want to?
Yeah, so real quick, do we know what the requirements are for designated, designating an area a school zone? We don't meet warrant requirements putting a stop sign there, I get that.
Are you talking about on Chestnut Street or at Ridge? So just based on some of the language that we looked at with this study, it sounds like that that access to Chestnut is actually, or they're supposed to not be used for traffic, and they're supposed to use Ridge and Chestnut. Sorry, Ridge and Germantown. What I was just going to say here is that it sounds like there's a lot of outside concerns that are on Ridge and Germantown that need to be looked at. So it's not that, you know, our study is ignoring that, but we were tasked with looking at traffic calming on this segment. So like in regards to the school zone, that's something that we can look into. We have to look at the school, look at Ridge, look at Germantown. What's out there, I'm not sure exactly off the top of my head what is out at Germantown. Now, I think you just mentioned that's a school zone now. But, I mean, because it is a school, you know, there certainly are signs and things that I'm sure we can put out there to improve the situation.
Not to interrupt, we have checked for school zones for St. Philip's on Ridge Pike on numerous occasions. Because the school does not front on Ridge Pike, we've never been granted the school crossing and the school zone designation. Hence why we have the flashing lights that warn of crossing for the school zone, for the crossing guard on Ridge Pike at Chestnut Street. But we do, it doesn't qualify under PennDOT warrants for a full school zone as we have on Germantown Pike, because that's the frontage street for the school. So for the same reason, it would not qualify on Chestnut? Correct. And we've looked at it on numerous different occasions. For as long as I've been here, we've looked at it. From time to time, they change warrants on how things are established. I probably should have got up before. The stop signs at the driveway to St. Philip's would not be warranted under PennDOT regulations. So if we put stop signs up there, we could not enforce them. So I don't know who you would have enforcing them. They would be, in fact, you know, unenforceable based on the warrants required. And that's what we use in White Marsh Township. We have a traffic safety unit. I will further state that the speeds were not recorded by the electronic signs that display the speed. That's not the method we use to get the data that was used for Gilmore. We have, for lack of a better, invisible markings that we use to get the speed that, for that reason. We don't want people to see the speed. We want to get what their true feeling is before. So the study was done with equipment that we have that does not display, it just records. That equipment with the signs does record, but that wasn't the information we used for this, because people do adjust their habits when they see the police cars, when they see the signs. We wanted a true reading. And that's the, that's the information that we provided to Gilmore for their study prior to putting the signs in place, which are the portable signs. Because of the amount of roadway that we have in the township, we move those signs and our trailers around all over the township. We get complaints throughout the township. Leaving them there permanently or making them a solar is a whole different setup and a different, different thing that we do. And also, we've been working, the traffic safety unit and the police department working with Gilmore, they were asked to do the study just to Chestnut Street and come back with suggestions and ideas and get feedback. We did identify some other items that we need to look into further. They were here to give a status report and to do that. And that's the information we're trying to provide to the neighborhood. And the limitation of it being on Chestnut Street, we can't look at everything all at the same time. They don't, like, what's happened on Germantown Pike and Ridge Pike are different in themselves. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
The last thing I was just going to mention, that I think a lot of people brought up, was the turns off of Ridge onto Chestnut. So if we did look at the truck restriction and all of that, we could simply run turning templates at both ends, which would show where you would put that stop bar. So that's something that we can look at. And again, like I said, if we are going to further the discussion of the existing truck restriction that appears to be out there, I don't know whether or not...
It's not ordained.
Okay.
That's something that we've discussed and we have to look further into. They appear to be, some of the parking signs and the truck restriction signs seem to be vestiges prior to some of the ordinances that we had, and that's a discussion that we've started. Again, it's been a month, we've been doing the study, we've had the presence out there identifying problems, identifying needs, whether it's signage or ordinances to make sure that the parking restrictions that we do decide or not decide to put in are enforceable as would be the truck restriction in the proper way of posting that. Because actually where it's posted right now, the truck wouldn't see it till it already turned onto the street. So there would, there's, there would have to be signs placed on Mast Arms on Ridge Pike and other places. You know, we're getting deep into the weeds here that we didn't go there yet.
Okay.
Is parking currently permitted on both sides of Chestnut? The only place by ordinance that parking is restricted is down by Germantown Pike in the area of the old White Marsh Valley Inn. And that was from a problem years ago when the restaurant was open and deliveries being delivered there. There are some other signs that were there, we're not sure when, how, and by whose authority, but we're trying to get that all straightened out. And we'd want it to work with the engineer. If we decided there should be some parking, we would do it properly through ordinance so it is enforceable by the police. Same with the truck restriction. So how wide is Chestnut?
21 feet.
Yeah, 21 feet for the most part. What's the minimum width you need for one-way traffic?
For one-way traffic?
Yes.
It, I'm sure it's in the ordinance, it varies slightly, I don't know.
12, I believe, is what's in the Selda.
Yeah, so, so on a road like this, you could have staggered parking available on both sides because that actually serves as traffic calming in itself, which is why, like I said, we aren't intending to say there shouldn't be any parking here, but because it is so narrow, like I said, you don't want to have parking permitted on both sides at the same time in one area because you don't leave enough room for proper traffic flow at all. If it's only 21 feet wide.
So you need 12 feet for a lane of traffic. How much do you need for parking?
Parking is eight feet wide, so if you had it on, like I said, on both sides, it only leaves five feet if you had two eight-foot lanes there, just, you know, based on the assumption that it's 21 throughout. But I know there are some areas where people park that's sort of on some paving that was extended or some grass areas, so that's why we wanted to sort of discuss that further and sort of get a feel of, you know, where the residents are parking. There are driveways, I guess some people don't have driveways, so it's a bigger discussion regarding that.
I would suggest that as you move forward, that you look at potentially one-way from Ridge to Germantown, parking on one side of the road only. That way you don't have this wide expanse that cars be traveling. Mr. Madam, Germantown to Ridge or Ridge to Germantown? Because the light is controlled at Ridge and Chestnut, which would be the safer direction and safer port of travel than having them come out on Germantown that's an uncontrolled intersection. Yes. To the light at Ridge. But the point being that you don't have this wide expanse, that they're limited to the 12, 13-foot lane that's marked, and the parking areas would also be marked, so possibly helping with that, with traffic calming even though it's one-way. Something to consider.
I think ultimately we have to keep the happiness of the residents in mind here. And what we accomplished tonight, I think, is we're still at square one. And just hearing the sampling that we're on, these speed humps aren't going to be the solution. So I think we have to look at other options, and I think we have to have more communication on this. I think that's what's most important because we're coming up with these solutions that aren't working for the people who live there. So I think we have to have more open-ended conversation as we move forward. That's it.
And certainly back to what Krista said about the resident survey, that would be the next step. So I think, you know, that will certainly...
That would be required for the speed humps, but it would also give them the opportunity for thoughts and ideas on the other options. The chicane option is similar, that could be similar to the one-way because that's what you create by the parking restrictions, but there's not cars in those spots unless you physically build the road out. It's the visual effect. So that's why there are more questions to them.
Absolutely. I just think for right now, we're not going to come up with a solution at this meeting. And I think what we established is that the current solution of speed humps, in my humble opinion, just from listening to the residents, is not going to work. Personally, I wouldn't want a speed hump outside my house, to be perfectly honest. So I mean, there has to be another way we can do it. That's all.
It sounds like from what you're saying as well, that a survey would be helpful no matter what, of the, you know, a resident survey would be helpful no matter what.
For the traffic calming measures themselves, yeah, that's required. I know there's a lot of things we're throwing around that could also be incorporated that wouldn't necessarily require the survey, but the traffic calming and speed and all of that, and speed humps or whatnot, would require the survey.
Thank you.
I have a question about the survey. Sorry, I just wanted to ask, I think the way that it's described in the, in the traffic study, it says this survey would go to residents in the project area. How would you determine who those residents are? Would it only be the houses that are directly on Chestnut? Would it include other houses?
It should include the businesses and the houses that are, that are on Chestnut. Or that, you know, feed Chestnut directly. It wouldn't be spread out to, you know, neighboring streets. However, I will say that the problem with one-way operation is that if you're, again, this obviously needs to be discussed and looked at, but you're then affecting, I don't know which other cross street in the area that it would be, but you're forcing all the traffic that's trying to get in the other direction or trying to circle back onto another road. So then that has to be taken into account as well.
So there are a lot of things going on here. And I think what Patrice is also alluding to is walkability, not just the residents on Chestnut and people driving along that road, but people crossing the street on Germantown and walking, you know, in our neighborhood. We want walkability. And also we have Bridge Pike Improvement Project coming, you know, there's a lot in emergency access when things happen on the expressway. So there's a lot going on here. What I would propose, I, we've heard a portion of the residents, again, in the area, that, I don't know, Rick, if we need to make a motion on this, but that a survey go out, I just need, can we expand? I don't know if that makes it more complicated to not just Chestnut...
Or should it go to the Chestnut Street residents first to see, to see what the feedback is?
And then go from there.
And then go from there.
Sure.
And you also have to start somewhere, and they came in with the speeding issues on the road.
Agreed.
I mean, we're not going to solve, they could come up with a laundry list and it'll grow out in the area. So I, and I don't mean, but I think we have to start somewhere.
So the fees, the feasibility, the survey would be great, Krista, along with looking at the humps, signage in that area, whether it be stop signs, we've already heard about the stop signs, but also the traffic signs, anything else?
Watch children.
Watch children, things like that.
I think we can look at the overall...
Signage in general.
The overall signage, we talked about, you know, signage out there, making sure what sign is ordained, and that is key. and that is key. Ordaining a sign allows.
If I have a chance to talk when you guys are ready.
Ordaining a sign allows the police to enforce, and enforce means you could write a ticket, you could provide a warning, you could do all of those things without it. If they wrote a ticket and they went to court and the person who got the ticket went in our code book and said, "There's no ordinance," that ticket is thrown out. So, you know, it's all well and good to put these measures in place, but if you can't enforce them, they're not worth what they are. So that's something else that, and the Police Traffic Safety Unit does a good job of, when we get these kinds of requests, go out and look at the signs, because sometimes, you know, a sign might have been replaced and we replace it, we replace it. It's been up there for years and years and years. It might not be in our code book. So they've done a good job of making sure that a lot of the signs on the streets are ordained and enforceable.
Sure. So do I need to make a motion?
For what you would like the staff to do, I think that would be helpful.
One more, one more comment?
Yes, can I make another comment? My comment is, I know this is a work in progress and it's gonna take a while, you know, to work it out, but what I seriously think is the suggestion about that thing over the light to slow that down. The louvers, I think that's an excellent idea, one hopefully slowing some of the speed down, at least in the one direction. Do you know what I mean? And, you know, even if it's baby steps, trying to come up with solutions is the best thing we can do. You know, even if it's only one thing at a time that we're coming up with, the louvers, if they help slow some of the traffic down, that would be wonderful. And I think that that sounds like, you know, I'm sitting here listening and thinking about it, and I think that sounds like one of our first steps, I really do, to try and make it a safer place for everyone on the street. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question on those? If the board does decide to proceed with that, that requires an amendment to the signal plan, right?
To the signal permit plan, right? We would have to get approval from Penn Dot.
Okay.
And it honestly wouldn't be much of an effort. It's a note added to the plan, and then we sip in it and wait for them to say yea or nay.
Do you need a vote to do that?
I think if we have some guidance through a motion of what the board would like to see, that would be helpful to staff to take the next steps.
Do I have a motion to allow, permit our engineer to pursue a survey of the residents in the Chestnut Street and surrounding businesses regarding speed humps and further explore signage and other measures related to louvers? So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Perfect. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I realize this is very important.
Thank you so much.
And I am. Get on the survey? Oh, yeah, yeah. My battery's about to die.
Some poor little kid was biking across. He was midstream.
Okay. Thank you. We are gonna move along here. And, okay, Chestnut Study. All right, so we are down to. Spring Mill? Do I have a motion to authorize the request from Spring Mill Fire Company in the amount of sixty-one thousand and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the fire capital funds towards the purchase of a new boiler? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair Nester. This was a request made by Spring Mill. They have an aged boiler system that they have been repairing, band-aiding for many years. It's well beyond its useful life. This request was reviewed, vetted at the Emergency Services Board meeting last, two weeks ago? Two weeks ago? And the Emergency Services Board, based on the information provided by Spring Mill Fire Company, recommended that a distribution from the fire capital fund in the amount of sixty-one thousand eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents be allocated to Spring Mill to replace their boiler.
Thank you. That sounds rather important. Do we have any board questions or comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair Nester. We do have one ordinance that we have to take action on.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1011, amending Chapter 10 Historic District to correct the number of affirmative votes for the official action?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
This was reviewed last month and authorized for advertisement. It was noticed that we did not have the proper language in this chapter of the HARB, which affirmed the correct amount of individuals who could vote. It was sent to the Solicitor's Office. There was an amended resolution, or excuse me, ordinance that was prepared, is before use, been advertised, and this will correct and properly allow those that convert, can vote, an affirmative vote at the HARB and the number of those that can vote.
Thank you. I'm switching over. I'm sorry, my battery here is dying. I'll keep that one going as long as I can. I can't see anything here. Do we have any public comments, board comments? And is this a roll call?
This is.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yeah.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I could just make one comment?
Yes.
As you all know, we share the historicus with Plymouth Township, and they have a very similar ordinance to ours. At the HARB meeting yesterday, their council liaison reported that they were voting on a very similar amendment this coming Monday, so that we'll all have consistency among our ordinances again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always have a backup plan, right? And now we are down to the fire code. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment adopting the 2018 Fire Code?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. If you recall back in 2020, our Fire Marshal Nick Weaver recommended that we adopt the 2015 Fire Code. And since that time, in February, the Uniform Construction Code and the International Code Council updated the addition to be used for the Fire Code to 2018. Therefore, in order to be in compliance, he is recommending that the township adopt the 2018 Fire Code for all Fire Code requirements.
That makes sense. Nick does such a great job keeping us abreast of everything. Any board comments? Any public comments? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the township solicitor to draft an ordinance and authorize the advertisement amending the non-uniformed employees' pension plan? So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Chair Nester. Our, what we call our 457 Plan, was discovered by our Finance Director, Kevin Barron, when going through it, that the age when an employee is allowed to take distributions was seventy-point-five. We're unsure, this might be just from a long time ago, of why that number came about. In speaking with Nationwide, they indicated that the normal retirement age for a non-uniformed person would be sixty-five years old. And then in keeping with our police officer, it's fifty years old with a minimum of twenty-five years, which is there when they're eligible for their pension. So we're looking to amend this part of the plan. In order to do so, as we reviewed it with the Solicitor's Office, it's required to be done by ordinance. Therefore, they will help draft that ordinance so that we can have this corrected for both non-uniformed as well as uniformed officers for the 457 Plan, which is all employee contributions.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, for finding that. Any board questions, comments, any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize an ordinance amendment to transfer the collection of delinquent refuse fees to Portnoy Law?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. As you may recall, last month, the board authorized Portnoy to be our tax collector for delinquent refuse taxes. In order to do so, in order for them to be a tax collector, this ordinance, which identifies all the fees and spells it all out, needs to be adopted by the township. So therefore, we're requesting that this be authorized for advertisement and then will be considered at our next public meeting.
Very good. Do we have any public or board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the final escrow release, number one, for Verizon Wireless 5175 Campus Drive in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-six cents? So moved.
Second.
Ms. Heinrich?
This is, as you mentioned, for Verizon Wireless on Campus Drive. They've actually been done for some time now. I suspect they just realized that they had escrow remaining, so they made their request. We inspected the site and found everything to have been installed in accordance with the plans in our recommending release.
Excellent. Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling one million, five hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents, and payroll totaling seven hundred and three thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents, and pension paid costs totaling four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents for February 2022? So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please. I thought that went out. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. There we go. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of two additions at 15 East Germantown Pike?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This is to remove two dilapidated additions that are nonhistoric on this building. It has been inspected by the Building and Codes Director at the, as a result of a condition of approval imposed by the zoning hearing board last October, and he found that they should be removed immediately. They applied for the demolition permit. It was reviewed yesterday morning by HARB. HARB made a recommendation that the demolition permit be approved through the certificate of appropriateness, so we're recommending that that be done.
So what will remain there?
The existing building at 15 is a substantial building, and there's a land development pending review right now that would be adding an addition on the back of it, and the entire building would be renovated, converted into offices, and there's expanded parking between 5 and 15. They're owned by the same owners, and they're gonna be used jointly.
Thank you. Any board comments? Are there any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the roof replacement at 20 Marple Lane?
So moved.
Second. Charlie?
Thank you. This is a very simple application. The owner of 20 Marple Lane owns a farmhouse on the property and some other outbuildings. He is proposing to change out his roof on both the main farmhouse and a spring house to more current roofing. He proposed more appropriate slate-colored roof, his asphalt. Currently, there's an asphalt roof on both the buildings that is kind of a brick red, which is not within the character of the buildings. He's also replacing gutters with historically correct gutters, and HARB again recommended unanimously yesterday at their meeting that a certificate of appropriateness be approved for this.
Excellent. Thank you. Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. And that brings us to the public comment period. Do we have any public comments? Come on up.
Yeah, Robert Franz, Wildflower Drive, Plymouth Meeting. It's been a long time since I've been able to come to a township meeting. I don't do Zoom, and I do want to say I find the agenda in the current thing gives us a tremendous amount of information prior to coming to a meeting. I remember years ago, the agenda meeting would have, oh, three words. It would try to tell you what it was, and you didn't have any idea. So I like the fact that we get tons of information. We can always scroll past it. Now, I'm here because of the recent real estate tax bill I got from Burckheimer. The politicians have said, "Hey, the county, we didn't raise your taxes." The township says, "We didn't raise your taxes," so I looked at the tax bill, and it went up. It went up because Burckheimer decided to round up the numbers for the county real estate and the county MCC. Now, I do question whether that's even legal for them to do. Now, maybe it only adds about a dollar to each tax bill. But if it's each one, and there's two or three thousand taxpayers in this township, that's over two thousand dollars taken out of the pockets of the shareholders, I mean, the taxpayers. And if it was one person, it'd be a felony, so I question whether they have a legal right to do this. I really don't like the idea that they're pulling that kind of stuff. They didn't do it last year. They're pulling it this year. Now, it kind of reminded me of a 1950s program on television where they were trying to find a tax embezzlement at a big bank. They couldn't figure out what was going on. Turned out, one guy was taking fifty cents, twenty-five cents from inactive accounts, and over a large number was a nice little income for him. But it snuck by because most people didn't notice it. Well, I noticed a dollar extra. I know these companies that collect taxes, it's very, very lucrative for them. And if Burckheimer is doing this on everyone that they're dealing with, And if Burckheimer is doing this on everyone that they're dealing with, that's a lot of extra money. And the reason it's very lucrative for them is because they can use that to manipulate bills and legislation. In fact, it was in the 70s or the 1980s here in Pennsylvania that one of the tax collection agencies got a state senator into trouble, and he went to prison for violations, whatever, having to do with promoting that particular business. I don't know how many people have been here. This is a tax bill I got from the Enforcement Division, telling me that I had failed to pay my taxes. And they had all the detailed information for my state tax return. Now, why didn't I pay the taxes? I didn't work in Plymouth, I didn't live in Plymouth Township. And they got the information from the school board, they didn't pay any attention. They told me that giving the power to these private companies puts your own stuff at risk. The other thing is I went online to see how I would pay it, because it's a little bit risky now. You've heard everything about putting checks in the mail. You really have to go to the post office. So I go on the website. If I use the ACH, the Automatic Clearinghouse, I have to pay a service fee for Burckheimer. I don't for the state when I pay my taxes. I don't for the federal when I pay my taxes. So there's another fee. So I look at, I have to probably put the check in the mail two weeks early to make sure that the post office gets it up to Lehigh. Now, coming in tonight, if I didn't know, I see there's a box out there that I can put the property tax bill in. Is that going to be open 24/7? I know that you can do that for the sewer bill. And I just don't know whether that vestibule is going to be open. If I swing by here on a Saturday on my way to biking out of Spring Mill on the Schuylkill River Trail, whether that vestibule will be open or not. Do you know that?
We can have, Kevin will answer a lot of his questions.
Because that would save me, then I don't have to worry till Senate. I know that it's actually made it in on time. Because otherwise, I have to put it in the mail on the 15th. I got state taxes due on the 15th, federal taxes due on the 15th, state estimated taxes due on the 15th, federal estimated taxes due on the 15th, and the sewer bill coming due shortly thereafter. That's a lot to keep track of. And I like to be able to know that it's made it properly on the time it was supposed to. Thank you.
I can ask Mr. Barron to come up, our finance director?
He's on his way.
Okay. I'll try to
Those of you that are through Zoom and can't see Kevin, Kevin Barron is our finance director.
I'll try to answer each question at a time. As for Burckheimer rounding this county and MCC tax, they had nothing to do with that. The county, many years ago, rounded their tax bill. Last year, when I started and we turned the bill over to Burckheimer, I was not informed of that as being a new person here at the township. I turned the bills to Burckheimer, and we printed the bills, not rounded. So last year should have been rounded, but it was not. The county was not happy about that with me, but they lived with it, and we moved on. So Burckheimer had nothing to do with the rounding. The county passed that many, many years ago. As you all know, I worked in another township. The township rounded the whole tax bill, county, township, MCC, whatever, everything was rounded to a dollar. It made it easier for the tax collectors to collect the money and not round and do all that, use cents and all that stuff. Secondly, I forget what the second question was.
About the time in the, the place to go in the lockbox.
The box in the lobby is from when we handed it here. If you put it in there, we will, I check that, not daily, but we check it weekly. I'm going to turn around and mail it right to Burckheimer. So you either can mail it to Burckheimer, or I can mail it to Burckheimer. I cannot stamp "paid" on it because I am not the collector of taxes. We've turned that over to Burckheimer. If you walked in here and gave it to me, I would turn around, put it in an envelope, and mail it to Burckheimer, as we talked about last year when we moved this, that we would not put more on the resident. If they walked in here and gave me the bill, I cannot stamp "paid." I can stamp "received," but I cannot stamp "paid." And I would gladly mail it to Burckheimer for them. We had someone come in yesterday, and we helped them get the bill mailed to Burckheimer. So, I think, is that it? One other.
And Burckheimer has office hours as well since we're in a new COVID community level.
Correct. When the bill was printed and I approved, the bill said that Burckheimer's Bridgeport Office was closed due to COVID. And since the CDC has changed the guidelines, and we did put this on our website, and we did do it on the eBlast, that the Bridgeport Office is open, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The hours are on our website, the hours are on the eBlast. I think it's 9:00 to 12:00, and 1:00 to 4:00. So they are open, they will take your taxes there if you want to go there to the Bridgeport Office. Again, if there's any questions from anybody that ever have, they can look me up on the website, call me, ask me any questions. I have, Fran refers people to me all the time, I answer their questions. Vince, I was on the phone with Vince last week, we've talked about a different question. So again, my name and number is on the website. You can please call me, and I'll answer anybody's questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other public comments? Any board comments? Do I, yes. Real estate.
You announce as executive session, real estate and personnel.
So we did have an executive session tonight where we did discuss real estate and personnel. Thank you, Rick. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Good night, White Marsh. See you, Patrice.